Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to call the finance meeting for June 21st, 2022 to order at 5:30 in the auditorium of the City of Chickaby City Hall. Can I have the roll call, please?
Laflambeau.
Here.
Zieglerowski.
Here.
Balakir.
Here.
Labrie. Tilletson.
Here.
Roy. Brooks.
Here.
Okay, also in attendance tonight, we have Council Dobaz, Council McCullough, Council Crampit, Council Costello, let's see, who's not on, Council Kuchain, and let's see, anybody on Zoom that I, we still don't know who Cal 2 is, so that's okay. Also in attendance, we have our attorney, Dan Garvey, and also with us tonight is Sharon Riley from the Auditor Department, to answer some quick question. And we have our administrative assistant and behind me, Agnes. And I would just ask, Mr. Morton, if you can announce who's at that table tonight, please?
Good evening. I have John Morecki, he's the Finance and Business Director, School Committee Member Gray Schofield, School Committee Member Samuel Shamsky, Assistant Superintendent Matthew Francis for Instruction and Accountability, School Committee Member Don Lamoth, and School Committee Member Timothy Wagner.
Thank you. Also present is the Mayor's Chief of Staff, Michael Pease. Okay, order. Order that the Finance Subcommittee meet to discuss the school department's budget. What I'm going to do is keep in mind, everybody, we only have until 6:15 for this meeting. We have the budget. So some of this stuff could be talked about at the budget also, if we don't have enough time. You, people can bring it up. So the two people that brought it together was Council Dobaz and Council Costello. Would you want me to open it, or do you want to open it?
It's up to you, Mr. President. I think we're all curious about the one and a quarter million.
Okay, so it was, it was brought up about the concerns of the 1.2 million that the mayor has cut from the, from the budget, and that particular cut, he just did not put it back in. And that's why we're here tonight, because public input indicated that there was going to be some issues with removing it. So if you could, that's what we're here to talk about right now. The budget, we'll talk about when we get to the budget hearing. But this is particularly about the 1.25 million. Alan, you got it?
So, good evening, and I guess from our perspective, we do kind of view it as a cut because it's been in the budget since 2017, when it was a budget shortfall in order to balance the budget. There was a, the previous administration, Mayor Koss's administration, and Superintendent Reji, there was a, I won't say a deal maybe, but it was a commitment made in order for that money to be in the budget each and every year. That's going to be the debate, whether it was, but it's been in our budget since 2017, from that perspective. And we would also, you know, from that perspective, we would look at it from, we've been building the budget based on the 1.25. It's 1.25 above net school spending. It's something we use in order to provide services. We base our money on the budget that we get every year, but we also are looking longitudinal from the services or programs we're going to provide in the future. For example, we're looking to expand CTE and the career pathways, with cosmetology coming in, in the fall, along with the education pathways at Chickaby High School. We're also looking to potentially expand in the future when it comes to CTE, HVAC, and plumbing at some point in time. But the biggest thing for us this year is, we wanted to go universal preschool. We went universal preschool because we didn't think it benefits the city as a whole. We all know that the studies show that the earlier kids are into education, the brighter their future's going to be, and, you know, get that acclamation to learning. So we increased preschool by adding two classrooms at Belcher School, two classrooms at Fairview School. That means that's four teachers, along with eight pairs, two pairs in each classroom. And we also made preschool free. At Satella preschool. So that's a new thing, because we've kind of been operating in the deficit at some point in time with the preschool situation, but preschool is now free from that perspective. So we also want to think about some of the things pre-COVID that we were utilizing, because that 1.25 will help a lot with all the things that were post-COVID, with all the services we're talking about, social emotional learning, talking to break, bringing in substance abuse counselors, and things of that nature. But the biggest things have been the actual preschool initiative we brought forward for this upcoming school year, along with all the other services that we're trying to address to come in, along with the safety and the security. So that's a big portion of what that 1.25 is dealing with.
Thank you. Just a moment, I just wanted to acknowledge, Council Lopez, Lopez is here tonight, just arrived. And I, I remiss to say that I forgot to announce that. In compliance with the open meeting law, the City of Chickaby is broadcasting live and for future broadcasts, this meeting on Chickaby TV. Thank you. Does, okay, I'm, with that said, I'm going to open up to city, some of the city councils that have questions, and we'll go from there. Just raise your hand as you go, and I'll try to get everybody. Council McCullough.
Thank you, I have a few questions, so just bear with me. The first will go to our attorney, Dan Garvey, and Dan.
Your mic on?
I think so. Usually people can hear me.
A little green dot on it?
What was that?
See if you got.
I've got a green dot, Mr. President.
There you go, thank you.
Okay. Attorney Garvey, I want to be clear, typically with regards to how this works in terms of whether or not the council has any ability to add this funding back, I believe there's a mass general law that the council would have had to adopted to give us the ability to take the school committee's recommendation. Has the city council adopted that mass general law?
No, they have not.
So, I think this is a good hearing, but as far as we can tell, there's no ability for the city council to add this money back to the budget.
Not at this time. So you are correct, there is a state statute which clearly says that the council cannot add to the budget, but clearly you can subtract from the budget. There is a provision in there, however, when it comes to the school department, that if the city had adopted it, it does give the city council a little bit of leverage and a little bit of ability with respect to the school committee budget. If we had adopted it, and if the school committee had adopted a higher budget number than was proposed by the mayor, and if it would not increase the tax rate, then you would have the ability to override his budget requests for the school department. But at this point, we did not accept that. So your power here is, again, just the general power, which is subtract, but not add to a budget proposal submitted to you by the mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, if I can, for one moment. So with that said, this meeting will be just, tonight will be just an informational meeting only. Thank you.
Thank you. And the reason I asked that question is I also found that in my research, something for this city council to look at in the future, to, that way we can continue to work more cooperatively with our colleagues on the school committee. My next question's going to go to Superintendent Morton. Can you just talk to us a little bit about the universal preschool and how it is impacted particularly with this funding not in the budget? Obviously, you had indicated there were plans to go to universal preschool. Will they be impacted by the lack of these, this funding included in the budget?
So to answer your question, I would say we'd be negligent if we didn't have a contingency plan. So obviously, we have a contingency plan, but that money was basically built upon our preschool program of adding that to elementary schools, Belcher, and also Fairview. And it was two classrooms, two teachers, along with two pairs in each classroom, for a total of four teachers and eight pairs. Also to the fact to absorb the cost of making Satella free for parents for the first time since I've been in the districts of over 16 years. So it would be free for them, along with extending the day from seven to four. That would be $150 cost for parents just for that before-school and after-school care. But we would have a contingency plan in order to keep that going forward, because we've already put the wills in motion in order to make sure this transpires in the fall.
But let's be, and correct me if I'm wrong, but let's be honest about this. Had the emergency funding not been available, we would not be able to have a contingency. Is that correct?
Without the ESER funds, yes. So we're able to now probably use grant money in order to make this possible now with 1.25 being subtracted from the budget.
So you plan to come up with that shortfall by using grant funding as opposed to ESER fundings for this particular program?
Well, grant, I mean, the ESER funding is, is grant money, which will run out in 2024, yes.
Runs out in 2024.
The ESER 3. So we have 1, 2, and 3. ESER 1 ended today as of June 30th, 2022. ESER 2 will end next year, 2023, and then ESER 3 will end June 2024.
So I relatively understand the different, differences between the different funding sources as part of the COVID relief, but I'm not sure the public or all of us fully understand the differences. So would you just take a second, and it could be anybody here at the table, just to explain the amount of federal funding, emergency funding, that Chickaby received so far, what we've spent that money on, when it expires? Because I know there's some confusion as to how long that goes. That would be helpful.
Okay, if I can, I'm going to ask you to hold off on that. I'm going to ask our city auditor to give an update of the funds that are, is in the school department first.
Right.
I think it's important that we all know the amount of money that is there. Then he can answer that question.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Do you want me to answer about ESER?
Yep.
Right. I mean, I don't have what, every item that's been expended, but I can tell you what they've received so far to date, what they're committed to receive, and how much they have left currently. So ESER 1, the total amount committed is 2.449, and of that, they virtually spent it all. There's a little over $5,000 sitting in there. Of that, of that 2.4, they've received to date 2.397. So it's virtually gone, for the most part. ESER 2, the commitment amount for ESER 2 is 9,946,117. Of that, they've received 7,80,000 to date. Of that amount that they've received, they have a balance left in that of 1,4669, and they're still to receive 2.8 million. And last but not least, ESER 3, which is the big one, a committed amount of 22,330,000 and change. We've received to date 7.7 million of that, and the balance in the account today is 3.7 million, just a little over, and the remaining amount expected to be received is 14.5 million. That's just ESER funds.
All right, so that is particularly helpful to my question. It may actually allow me to ask a little bit differently if you.
We're going to, we're going to let her finish the rest of the amount.
Okay, she's got more.
Yes, she's going to get the, all the funds that is in that school department.
Well, not all of them.
Not all, but the ones you.
I'm not going to go line item by line item. I, I think it would be helpful to know how much money is sitting in their prior year. That is, that is unobligated.
Does that include the number that I believe the mayor indicated last night was coming today?
The seven.
Well, basically.
Let her, she'll explain it, please.
Basically, prior to today, there was seven, a little over 7 million sitting in what they call prior year encumbrance, but it's not really a true encumbrance because there's no POs out there sitting against it. So it's an unobligated amount, really. It's basically a rainy day fund, if you want to call it such. And, and the balance as of today, which we reran, and we backed out a few things, like transportation, where the balance gets closed back to the general fund, the previous prior year encumbrance number that existed before, we're going to have an additional 5.8 million added to that, 7 million. Now, we have to remember, there's still some things that need to be paid, but it's a considerable amount that's going to be added. We still have a four-day payroll, and maybe a few other things that are, I mean, today was the deadline for putting POs out there. So if there's an obligation that was going to be coming from here, the PO would already have to be there. So we're looking at about prior year funds based on today's numbers, of about 12.9 million sitting in prior year funds. And that's getting to the scary point, because that's going to open eyes at the DOR, and probably with our outside auditor.
That's not usually done, right?
That shouldn't be done. There's no obligation against it. It's not a true encumbrance. It needs to be somewhere else. So I'm hoping that somebody's going to, you know.
You're talking like an auditor.
We haven't gotten our June transfers from school yet, so I don't know what's coming down the pike for June transfers, but we can't have $12 million sitting in a prior year encumbrance account with no obligations against it.
Okay.
That doesn't look right. And then on top of that, if we're talking true rainy day funds, from the DESI perspective, that would be school choice money, which they have 2.8 sitting there as of today.
Okay. All set?
You're all set.
I'm, I'm okay, if those are the things that I was asking to talk about.
That was very helpful.
Again, I just wanted to get it out there because of the fact that you guys all know the figures from the city side, what the auditor was able to provide us tonight. So with that said, you can continue with your questions.
Thank you, that'll allow me to amend my questioning a little bit, because I've got some answers that I was looking for. So just a couple of things, the way I look at the, what looks like 15 and change million in quote-unquote rainy day fund left with the schools. When you compare it to the city side, I think it's maybe a little bit more, but comparable. So I do think it's important in terms of how you do that legally has always been a little bit of a question, so you, I'm sure you guys will figure that out. But my interest is on the ESER funds, because I think there's a misconception about the purpose of those funds, and what the goals of those funds are. Of course, big, big part of that was an emergency focus, but there was also, as I understand it, a focus on that funding to help close some gaps. So if you could explain to us first, I see, you know, well over $10 million spent in 1, 2, and 3. Can you explain to us first the goals of ESER, conceptually, and how the district has adopted those goals? And what you've spent it on thus far? And what you plan to spend it on?
So to kind of address a particular piece, so the word slush fund is just such a bad word, but we have money left over from prior year accounts, no different than free cash for the city. So we had zero money come 2017. That money built up because of COVID. Things slowed down. We saved money. We saved the city money on transportation, we saved different things. So monies came back to the city, just like from the perspective, we gave back 2 point, I want to say 2 point, almost 2, over $2 million in transportation money last year. We'll give about, almost, huh? $800,000 back in transportation this year. So just to address that particular piece, it wasn't like we were holding on to cash because we have to spend 95% of our budget each and every year, but when COVID shut things down on March 13, 2020, things slowed down. We negotiated contracts with different people, so we had extra money that was around, and a lot of people were not there, along with the fact we didn't need Kelly Services. So therefore, that $850,000 we allocated went to that prior year funds. So we've had that for a while, along with people that did not come back. We didn't fill positions, or people left during the school year, we did not fill positions. So it's not like we're holding on to money. That money accumulated over a time period, and we will address that particular piece. So I just wanted to address that particular point, because it just made it sound like we were just holding and sitting on money, when that was not the case. The other piece when it comes to ESER is, it's about preparing, respond, and recovering from the COVID. So we built a lot of things in that particular piece. Like in ESER 2, we have some administrative salaries. We were able to hire a social emotional director, because social emotional learning has been a huge piece in that particular piece when people come back from, from COVID. And we're still dealing with social emotional learning. We've hired more teachers, more special education teachers. We have more needs within our schools right now, more paraprofessionals. We've had more committee work to address some of the needs within the buildings, to provide more supports and interventions. We've had building substitutes, because we had, our fill rate was below 10% over the last couple of years, dealing with Kelly Services, and that's the reason why we're going to our own.
The menu for that.
Substitute situation. We put school intercoms, we're putting in camera systems, health support services, and even during COVID, we had to buy Chromebooks, because everybody had to go one-to-one, because it was remote learning. We're also trying to continue with the remote learning, not the remote learning, but the one-to-one structure when it comes to Chromebooks. School supplies, we all know that school supplies and materials is not a stable thing. Every year, it fluctuates, depends on what's coming in and what's coming, what's going out. Wireless services, in order to make sure we're fully wireless within the schools, school security cameras, the yonder pouches was something we were dealing with. That's post-COVID, because kids were addicted to their phones. Also trying to provide more substance abuse prevention services, because kids want to vape, are addicted to vaping. Apple devices, subscription, high-speed internet, and also school radios has been a big thing. ESER 3, which we spent money on, $3.9 million, was for the retention stipends. That we used, a big piece of it. And also, we're going to be using it to repair air handling systems for schools and non-scholes. And then new storage facility for the maintenance department are the big things we're looking to do with that particular piece. And a lot of after-school programs, we have summer school programs this year. We're having a summer school program, the middle school, three elementary schools for all our programs, both our high schools, ESY, and we're also offering a summer camp this year that's free of charge to people, based on a lot of the grant money we're actually doing.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I do have a couple more.
Yeah, but you're going to have to hold. I'm going to limit it to two questions per person, Consular. Then we'll go back. Out of fairness, we only have so much time, and other councils want to ask questions. So I'm going to go to two maximum, and then if we have more time, we'll go back. Council Costello.
Thank you. In regards to the air conditioning in all schools, are you up to date on that, Superintendent Morton?
We kind of got behind on that, but we're working on that now. We're speaking, we're doing air conditions. We speak, but we had the air conditions done in the classrooms for substantially separate classrooms. We finished most of our schools, but we're back, we're back on track now to putting AC in all our schools.
Now, where's that money coming from?
Did you want to, go ahead.
I want to speak in that for a second. We had a facilities subcommittee, a facilities subcommittee meeting, and I talked to Scott Chapdeline, and what we were trying to do is do it on the cheap and have his crew do it all. And because he's fallen behind the last couple of years, I asked him to go out looking for bids. So what was going to take probably, the capital budget that Mayor Koss had put together was 3.2 million, I believe. Well, that number that's in there for air conditioning is going to, it's going to triple that easy. It's going to probably be like $2.5 million. But we got the ESER money, so we're going to look to do that. The mayor's also asked that we consider air conditioning in the cafeterias, the gyms, the libraries. So there's additional money that wasn't going to be in that capital budget. That's going to also be coming out of ESER. And we just discussed that the other night, and that's the only reason why, I'm sorry I interrupted you, but I wanted to get that out there, because I don't know if you remembered that.
No, I remember that. So, and we're going to also make sure we put in new air, air handling units on the bigger places, in the gyms and different buildings that are kind of antiquated. Our bigger schools are fully air-conditioned all the way through, Chickaby High, Chickaby Comp, Bellamy, Bellamy's not. We have at least most of the classrooms, but we're working on Bellamy. DuPont is, and we're trying to address, Bowe is also, Fairview is also. Fairview was not. Striber is, Bowie is. So we're trying to make, and Belcher. So just like this year, in summer school, we're using the schools that are air-conditioned. Belcher, Bowie, and, but Stefanic is not, but classrooms over there are. So at least all of our schools have some classrooms that are air-conditioning, but we're making sure now, we are going out for bid to try to increase that process. But that's coming out of ESER money.
When do you expect the air conditioning project to be completed?
He didn't give us a timetable. We were hoping before the end of next school year. We didn't have an issue this year when it came to being hot and having half-days or anything like that, particular piece. But we're hoping to expedite that sooner than later now, if we return to some form of enormity. COVID kind of slowed that down.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else for public, I mean, for comments? Council Kuchain.
So just to make sure, so the AC and air issues are under ESER funds? Because that was going to be one of my questions.
Correct.
You can use, all right.
They were under capital.
But you have ESER funds to use now, so.
They were under capital, and we've done quite a bit under capital, but for like Bellamy, for instance, all the Univents are electric heaters.
Right.
And you're sucking in 90-degree air, because you got to have fresh air coming in because of COVID. So we've looked into going with, I'm going to say a hotel-type thing, where you're sucking in the air, you're conditioning it, and then you're sending it into the room, so you get conditioned, fresh air. So what we talked about with Scott at the facilities is, in order to do that, he's probably going to have to hire somebody to do that, in order to get that done in a timely event. Especially when you only got a couple of years before the ESER money disappears. So we're going to look to try to upgrade to what we were going to do, to something better, but to try to do it right, so that it helps us if we come back to another pandemic.
And it's, it's appropriate use for the ESER funds.
Right.
Right, instead of taking the hit. So, and I, just to comment on the Chromebooks, I know when I spoke with our IT director, I was with him when he was purchasing them, those were purchased through the stimulus money. So the city never paid for those books. And luckily, he was ordering them before the ship got sent back to China. We got ours in time for school. So kudos to our director there, but that was not an encumbrance on the city or the school department. And then, so with the $10 million, that's, I'll say, left over, unencumbered, is there any way we can help the teachers out with all the things they complain about? And, you know, when they come to our meetings on social media, you know, I taught for a little while on Chickaby High, and yeah, I taught stuff too. But is there any way we can help those teachers out with that money? And fund, you know, the little things that they're asking students to bring in the school, with tissues and all that stuff? You know, we're putting a lot of burden on teachers and the parents to bring in stuff that it sounds like the school can afford.
Correct. So go back to the, the piece about the air conditioning. Already in ESER was built in, before we had the facilities meeting, was the air handling unions. So we're supplementing that particular piece with the capital improvements budget. But to your particular question right now, that we do provide a lot of things at schools, from notebooks to pencils and everything else, in particular schools, the more we can learn from teachers and what's needed, we will provide more. We get donations, we do stuff to bus, we give out backpacks, we get hygiene products. So the more we can learn from the teachers, and more we can learn from the students and the family, what the needs are, we can make resources, like we have hygiene closets in some schools. So we're trying to provide more and more. But definitely can use that money to allocate, to provide more resources. I mean, just to start of school, paper, pencils, backpacks, whatever's needed.
Right, so it sounds like it just needs some communication.
Correct.
And then, if I may, one last time, can, there's been a lot of speculation about the Mass Mutual Building, since we're having a public forum right now. Can you just give us an update on what or what not is the intentions for that?
Well.
I know it's, it's an in-the-air kind of thing, but.
There's nothing tied to that, there's nothing exact to that particular situation. And obviously, that was mentioned in a public setting. The reason that was mentioned in a public setting, and I will take the, the, you know, sort of the hit on that, is because one of the things when we move into DuLong Circle, because we closed down 180 Broadway because of air ventilation, was because we needed a new building. So we are renting from DuLong Circle as we speak right now. It is a five-year lease. So therefore, one of the things the school committee ordained us to do, once we found a building that is really temporary, because there's no option to buy, our obligation was to find a permanent location for central office. So we're just looking and trying to see what's out there for central office, because we're outgrowing central office, and we have plans to grow and do things like that for community engagement. There's nothing tied to it, we're just looking as we speak right now. So I don't want anybody to think that this is a done deal, or just something from that perspective. We are looking for a permanent space for central office as we speak.
No, I appreciate that. I figured you might get some clarification out there. So I thank you for that.
Council Dobaz.
Thank you, I'll be really quick. So you kind of answered this question, sir, but I just, just to be very clear. So will universal preschool happen, or is that reliant on the one and a quarter million?
It will happen. I would be negligent to say we didn't have a contingency plan. Obviously, with the numbers that were just, you know, told from the city side of what we have in our funds, yes, we have a contingency plan, and we can make sure that happens.
Thank you. Is there anything else that you want to advocate to the councils about why you would need the one and a quarter million? Like what specifically would you like to use that money for right now?
I mean, obviously, we have a lot of needs coming post-COVID. It was a tough school year, it was the first year that we were back fully in school. I think most people were happy just to see kids were fully back in school in some type of enormity, and not realizing what type of, for lack of a better term, what type of concerns or baggage they were bringing with them. So obviously, we could use more social workers, we could use more substance abuse prevention counselors, we can use more interventions and supports, you know, more technology from that perspective, and then even incentives for students to realize that, you know, to get them re-acclimated back to school. So those are some of the things from that perspective that we could be looking for, and maybe even more supports in the classroom programs. We are buying a new curriculum, so that is one of the things we are using our, our ESER money for. We are doing a new 1K to 5 curriculum, ELA, and we're also doing a 68 curriculum in science. So we are using our monies wisely to do that. And as I stated before, that we're trying to project moving forward longitudinal, what was going forward. We may base some of our decisions on what the money we have for us for a particular year, but we're building the infrastructure for years to come with the money we have before us. But those are some of the things we're doing with the ESER money.
Council Balakir.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for coming. Two quick questions. The heating systems at the schools. I know that we were, we have a problem regarding gas, but more so oil at this point. I know that we have a problem regarding gas, but more so oil at this point. Is there any talk of having a plan of switching to whatever's the most energy efficient at this point in time?
That is a question I'd probably have to refer to Mr. Chapdeline, but he does have a committee as we speak right now that's going through the buildings, looking at AC and looking at heating and stuff, and they will bring back a recommendation to see what's gonna be moving forward.
The other, the other question regarding that, please, is the contracts for oil and gas that you have, are they year-to-year, are these set or can they be broken and renegotiated?
We go, we go to Lower Pioneer Valley for that, the collaborative to get that. Currently for this year with the high prices, we haven't locked in. We usually lock into one year, which is the January of the next year's future price at a given day when I send in the paperwork, but we haven't currently locked in just because of the high prices. Hopefully those do come down a little bit, the savings, but right now we're holding.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you. Consul Lopez.
Thank you. So as someone who is a strong advocate for funding education, however, that needs to be done, I'm a little perplexed by this whole thing. I'm perplexed by the fact that we're sitting here discussing $1.25 million when there's over $12 million sitting in an account. And essentially what's a free cash account for the school department and as we've heard from our auditor today, an account that really should not have that much funding in it. It also perplexes me that teachers continuously come to school committee meetings as well as to us and complain about conditions or lack of materials when we have $12 million sitting in the account. And so I think for this year, walking into this meeting prior to hearing those exact numbers and there were rumors about what the numbers may have been, I was like, you know, if it's, if it's a couple million dollars, I still believe in giving the 1.25 because why not fund this? Because I was under the impression that our preschool program that you are rolling out was dependent on those $1.25 million. However, after this meeting, I realized it's not dependent on this $1.25 million. You have 12, over $12 million just sitting there. And you also just asserted to us that from that $12 million, you have enough to fund the preschool program. So I think at this point for me, I would deem it kind of inappropriate for us to dish out another $1.25 million when you have not even used up all of your money. It, that's, it's just confusing to me and I really wanna understand why we're even asking for $1.25 million when there's 12 million sitting in an account. And I don't mean any shade by that. I really wanna understand what's the purpose of asking for this money when you have so much money sitting in an account.
And the quick explanation to that, Councilwoman Lopez, is the fact that there was a commitment made by the city. So I understand that 12.5 or 12.9, obviously it's something we've never had, that amount of money in our prior year funds before because we were at zero in 2017 and that was the reason why without having layoffs that the 1.25 was put in there and it was part of the tax bracket, it was baked into the taxes. Now, we can debate that particular piece, but it was something that was promised on a yearly basis and it's something we built the budget on. So I don't know what prior screw, prior year funds was the previous year. It might've been $5 million. The 1.25 was already in there, there wasn't a debate there. So therefore, you know, we're talking this year where we actually put it into the budget and it's a concern about taking it out. Well, we had prior year funds also last year, we had grant money also last year too. So our thought process is it's not something that we actually come and ask for every year. It was already, it was committed to and promised to us on a yearly basis. That's the debate we're gonna have here right now. We understand we have the money. This is the most grant money we've ever had in, over the last 16 years. So this is something because of COVID, they put a lot of money in the coffers that we have and COVID is the reason why we have the excess of money in prior year funds. But we did have prior year funds last year. We had about $12.6 million in grant money last year as opposed to a total of $41 million that we have in grant money we received over this past year, including our federal grants. So we're in last year, so we're at the same point. We didn't think we had to either request that money, we thought it was something that was committed on a yearly basis.
Yeah, so my understanding of that commitment, as you're calling it, was that there was a shortfall and in order to meet that shortfall, that 1.25 was granted. I, so my thing here is if we get to a point that you run out of these over $12 million and you need more funding, then you come to the Council and you ask for more funding. But for me, it just does not seem fiscally responsible for us to dish out $1.25 million to then also sit in an account when you already have over $12 million sitting in that account. When we could use that money to perhaps, you know, take a little bit of the stress off of the taxpayers and use it for other things. And if you need more money, then we, you can come to us and I, I don't think any of us are opposed to granting money when money is necessary, but when there's $12 million sitting in an account and you're asking us for an extra million, that to me seems a little preposterous. I don't really understand the true need for that.
Well, I don't think, your perception of it is we're asking, so 2017 is when there was a shortfall. After that, there was not a shortfall. That money was in the budget each and every year from that perspective. That 1.25 puts us 1.25 above net school spending. With any type of chargebacks, without the 1.25 in there, the city could be below net school spending. We won't know until the end of the school year. So this is just the minimum above net school spending 1.25. We don't feel as though we're asking for it. We feel like it was a commitment on a yearly basis from that perspective. If you see it the other way, that is your perspective and you're, you know, entitled to that opinion. And I understand what you're saying with the 12.5 million dollars sitting in there. That's like I said, that is not a normal for us, you know, and it's something that built up because of COVID and it built up because of some of the money we've had because of the ESSER funds and there's a timeline on ESSER funds, which people fail to realize it's not seven years we have to spend it. We have to spend all our ESSER money within by 2024. And we have federal grants to come along, but people need to realize that was misspoken that we can spend our money any way we want with grants. That is not the case. There are certain parameters you can spend your grant money on. And I understand the optics of the situation with the 12.5 million dollars along with the grant money and we have used grant money where we could use the grant money. So all we can say is we've realized and we feel like it was a commitment on a yearly basis. If you all see it otherwise, then we understand from your perspective.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask the attorney to explain the year-to-year 1.25.
Your microphone.
I think the superintendent did explain it. It's a commitment, but as everyone on the Council knows, one administration can't bind a subsequent administration when it comes to funding. The legislature can't bind a subsequent legislature when it comes to annual funding. So I think it's, it was a statement, a commitment, but it wasn't an obligation that you're bound to abide by. I think that's what you're asking me.
Per mayor.
Per mayor. So every mayor and every Council has, within its own discretion, what to fund and what not to fund. You have to fund the net school spending, but you're not obligated from a prior administration what they had done. You don't have to do it, it's not an obligation, but I think it was a commitment or a statement.
Thank you. Consul Zigorowski.
I think most of my questions have been answered, but I still, the mayor took several hits on television, radio, newspapers, that he was the sole person to deny or cut the 1.25 million in stating that. He also said that there was plenty of money othered in one point, and you've answered that. So I have to agree with Ms. Lopez that when you got that kinda money, and I got a feeling it's even more than what's being told to us. Everybody's blaming COVID for everything, but you know, that's winding down hopefully, hopefully. And you know, the education of our children is top priority, I understand that, but also the taxpayers deserve a break. And I think the mayor made it clear that he was gonna take some of that money to give the taxpayer a break. Well, I think it's time for the school department to also give the taxpayer a break. I realize the amount of spending you're doing and it's, you have to do it. I understand that, but you know, how much can we keep absorbing? I mean, with the, you know, you're not running a bank at the school apartment. I don't believe you are. So you know, you might have extra funds in there, but you have to be a financial wizard to figure out your budget. I've been doing this and Councilman Tilson, I've talked to him about this and he's been around a lot longer than I have been, but I followed, I think about 18 budgets already and sometimes it still amazes me when I look at them. I don't quite understand it all, but I think at one point, I think the answer is you don't need the 1.25 right now. You'll survive without that money. Am I right or wrong?
You are correct.
Okay, that's all I, that's all I wanted to know. So the mayor was legitimately cutting it, knowing that how much money or approximately how much money you had, I hate to use the word in the bank, but you had funds and the teachers need something or something is needed, I'm sure you're capable with the monies that you're getting. Your budget has gone way up, but I understand that. You know, we're obligated to fund a good part of the budget and I think if you look at the history of this Council, I think we did that. We've been pretty fair with most departments and we'll continue to do something. If something happens that's catastrophic, I'm certainly if you came to us, we would listen to you. But when we got this kinda money sitting around and when teachers are complaining about supplies and air conditioning and this and that and that, you know, we got the money. Spend it on the schools and on the teachers and the students, but I don't think you need the 1.25 and I think the mayor was legitimate in cutting it and that's the way it should stand.
And with all due respect, Councilman Zigorowski, we were in the same position last year, same administration, had money in prior year money, had grant money, the 1.25 was in there. The difference in this time period, and like I said, we can debate, like I said, we would have been negligent if we didn't have a contingency plan. And we do have a contingency plan with the money we have, more money than we had before in grant money and where we can use the grant money, we've used the grant money. That is why that bank is built up, the prior year money, because we've been using grant money where we can actually use it and along with the COVID when things slow down. But please take in consideration, we have more and more refugees moving in, we have more than we ever had before, language speaking, to hire ELL teachers, ELL pairs. There is a lot of things that have changed from that particular situation that people don't understand. You can say we're blaming things on COVID, well, you got war-torn countries, people moving in, people moving to community, bringing things over here. There's more and more services that are needed for kids. This is also because of post-COVID that we're trying to prepare for. So I agree with the money we have in there and we have a contingency plan, but there's a lot of things that we're speaking of that are needed within the schools and supports that that money would go towards.
Thank you. I'll get to the school committee.
One more question, Frank. Just one more. Is it true that the numbers, I think I've talked to a few school board members, that our numbers are down with students coming to our, our city or in our school system? Are those numbers down and by how much?
The numbers are down, the enrollment as a whole is down. What's important to remember is what Superintendent was talking about. We're, we're a district that has a 71% free and reduced lunch population. So that is 71% of our students receive local aid from the, from the government because of the income that their family does not get. So 71%, so almost three-quarters of our, our students are free and reduced lunch. We've had, we've seen a increase in our ELL population like Superintendent Morton was speaking of as well. So even though our enrollment is going down, our need is increased exponentially that has just been magnified by COVID and the needs within COVID.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one will be up and I'll get to the school committee after the city councils. Who was next? Consul Tilson.
Yeah, right now you're in pretty good shape with the ESSER money, but I worry about in four years from now, if you spend it all on people, it's gonna be a disaster. Because if you think the tax rate is a problem now, in four years, if you put it all into people, and I'm not saying that's not, I'm not saying that's a good or bad idea, but if it all goes into people and, and your budget increases by seven or eight million, which it easily could with the ESSER money, the 1.24 million isn't even gonna cover anything in, in four years. I mean, you're gonna have to go way over maintenance of effort. So I'm glad to hear that you're gonna do some major repairs in the building, you're gonna do some, you get the air conditioning squared away, the ventilation squared away. I mean, I'm not saying you shouldn't put the teach, some teachers where you truly need them, but I think you gotta look at it from a perspective of a city taxpayer and you indicated this is not a wealthy community. You know, this is a community that's got a lot of poverty in it and, and the children are mostly all free lunch, you know, and so forth. I mean, so we've, we've gotta kinda do a juggling act here between what is best for the kids, because we know that we're not gonna be able to live up to what this ESSER money is all of a sudden may become available in, in four years when the budget's up eight or nine million. How are we gonna manage? I mean, if we think, you won't be looking for 1.2 above maintenance level, you'll be looking for five or six million over maintenance of effort.
So just to answer your, your statement, so right now only 1.5 million of ESSER money is allocated towards employees. So we are being very fiscal about how we do that because we do foresee a funding cliff coming at the end.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, cause I think if you're trying to look out for the good of the city and the good of the kids, you gotta be, you gotta be, almost be a juggler, you know, figure out how to make it work and I, and I agree with you. On the other side of the coin though, we, we get more money for, for the poor people, for the poor kids with the $300 we get now, for a student because we're, we're below the poverty level on some of these children, so our money's gone up there a little bit, but it's gone down on the other side because the enrollment's gone down. So that's been a catch-22. You know, it goes up here and down there. What the balance is, I don't really know.
Well, we're losing 8.6 million for kids going out for school choice, virtual school and charter school, so we're losing about 8.6 million a year.
Yeah, and what are we picking up from outside?
Less than a million dollars.
That's gone down too.
Less than a million.
That's gone down.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's, that's another sad case, because now all of a sudden people don't think we're the schools that we used to be and the, and because of that image, they're not, they're going to Granby or they're going somewhere else, they're not coming to Chickaby.
Well, I would say the advent of charter schools, we got charter, two charter schools in Chickaby, Hampton Charter School West, Paulo Freo, and then the opening of Hampton Charter School West that has, you know, people want a smaller environment.
You're right. The charter schools siphon off some of the better kids or, or the population, you're right. And that lowers the categories, you're right.
And I think also the fact that we went remote for that year, a lot of people stayed with virtual school. They wanted to stay with virtual school because of the remote learning that they had a experience with.
Yeah.
So we lost kids to virtual school also.
As soon as the ESSER money is gone, this will be the last time that we will be able, you'll be able to operate a maintenance of effort. I mean, and I wouldn't worry about that, but this year you don't really need it, in my opinion. You gotta be cautious how you go about using it so that four years from now, you know, we, we're, we're really gonna be in trouble if it goes up eight or nine million dollars or more, depending upon how to utilize it. So I wouldn't want your job, it's a good, it's a tough one right now. Cause you have money, but then how do you spend it? Cause you know you're not gonna have it forever.
Okay, if I may, it is now 6:15. What I'm going to do is I'm gonna call for an order to, I can, right. So we're gonna end this finance meeting, but we're gonna continue. So everyone can sit where they are because it's that important. I don't wanna, we're gonna start the budget hearing, let me get all that done, and then we'll go back into the same thing with the budget, cause that's basically what we can tie some of this into at the same time. So if I can make, get a motion to place on file from one of the members of the finance.
Do you want to place it on file?
No, yes, this meeting.
Do you want to place it on file?
I'm not calling it back. We're gonna end this meeting.
Alright.
I'm not gonna call it back, I'm closing out this meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so I need a member of the finance committee to make a motion to place on file.
Go move.
Motion made in second to place the finance subcommittee meeting with the school department on file. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, no, no.
We did.
Nope, good. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion has it. Okay. Now we're going to budget. I gotta do it. I got to do it. Okay, we're going to take a five-minute recess.
Yeah, I think you made some good points there.
Right. Because you're, once and for all, then people, you know, you're going to lay off. I have a little bunch of people. I'm just going to sit.
She's in.
Frank, are we doing budgets in order? How it's auditing? Are we doing school first?
They are, no, they are.
I don't care, that's fine. I was, all right, so I just wanted to know which ones stuff to have out. That's what I wasn't sure about because that's not the way it's set up, but I'll switch my stuff, which I don't really care about this because it's like, you can play, like Cigara.
Let's get this meeting on. Let's get going with this meeting. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
You know what?
If you could take your seats, please.
Go grab one of the bendy chairs.
We are now going live again. Thank you.
It's beyond 6:15 already.
Thank you. I'd like to call the FY 2023 budget hearing Thursday, June 30, 2022, in the City Hall Auditorium to order at 6:15 PM. Can I have a roll call, please?
President.
Here.
Roy.
Here.
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 Consul Roy is here.
Here.
And Consul Roy is here. He's having a problem on the Zoom, so, okay. So, okay, so we're back here. As you know, we were, we had an earlier meeting for the folks that are just tuning in. We had a meeting at 5:30 regarding the school department's $1.2 million discussion and we're now rolling into the school department's FY 2023 school budget. With that said, I'm going to go around again, but I'm going to go to Zoom first because we have Consul on Zoom and see if anyone wants to speak from Zoom. Consul Brooks or, that's it. Consul Brooks, you're all set?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then the next one I'm going to go to is before we go to around again for the city council, I do have two, I had two hands up from the school department, I'm watching. Consul Lamath, if you would like to speak on a couple of things and we'll go back to you and then we'll go back to.
I don't want to belabor the 1.25. Yes, we can live without it this year. The problem was is.
Want to use the mic, please?
Pardon?
The mic.
Is it on?
It's on.
We can live without the 1.25 for this year. Obviously, you've said we have the spare money that's sitting there currently. We try to be frugal on the school side. We try not to spend money that we're going to not be able to fund down the road. This has been going on for about 20 years that we've been working this way. Now, the big problem was is there was a commitment made and the lawyers explained to us that the commitment from another prior administration can't be used, but the commitment did happen the first two years of this administration. That being said, we still can live without the 1.25 for this year. My concern is the commitment's gone. Now, I've heard the mayor later say that he would come back with some money if we needed it. That made me feel a lot better, that took some of the wind out of my sails, at least not just saying it's done. And I've heard some of that commitment from the city council also.
Okay, so I'm just going to answer that. The mayor did say that he would commit if it, if there was a need for, and the city council, as president of the board, I also said we would commit because I know all of the city councils already, discussions would commit to it as needed for whatever reason may be. So again, I know you feel comfortable with it now that you know it's going to be there, but there has to be justifications on the city side. And I'm going to go to school committee Wagner. You had your hands up a few minutes ago. I wasn't ignoring you, but I wanted to get the council first. You have the floor.
I understand, no disrespect meant understood. My concern here is that, you know, what are we going to do with this? All right, we have to spend the 12 million, okay? We're not going to get the 1.25 this year. Okay, let's say we take 1.25 out of prior year. Let's say we keep doing that until we're out of it again. You know, what then? We're not, it's been referred to as our rainy day, as our free cash. If you know anything about municipal finance, you don't, you don't fund your day-to-day line item expenditures out of free cash. You don't do that. That's fiscally irresponsible. Not only that, you know, we, the figure that was brought up at the subcommittee meeting just a few minutes ago, the 5 million that we're getting this year, that has like never happened before. We've been building up that 7 million since 2017. That, how many years is that? That's over five years about at this point? This is a one-time thing because of COVID. You know, I can make the same argument with you guys and your free cash. You got, you know, you went, I think it was fiscal 2019, you got 8 million, next year 10 million, next year 10 million again, fiscal 2022. You got, you got $14 million in free cash, unspent city money. You guys are in the exact same position we're in. We have the money because it's a one-time thing that's never going to happen again because of a pandemic and we didn't, we didn't have to fund transportation and a couple other things. That's my whole big thing about this. You're saying we're flush with cash. It's a one-time thing that's going to never happen again until we have another pandemic.
Right. I think, if I may, you all set? If I may, I'm going to just say a couple of words. I think, you know, one of the things, when we come, we hear from teachers, we have teachers and the union president come to the city council and they believe that we're not giving the money that is needed for helping the schools. When they come and say that they're off, they need supplies and Mr. Morton said that they would give it to them, I think there needs to be some communications with the teachers or something because, you know, they need supplies, they're saying. There are schools that say that needs a lot of work. And I'm glad to hear the school committee Lamath say that, you know, they're going to maybe go for an RFP for the air conditioning systems. I think that's a great idea because Scott just can't handle it. No disrespect for him, but there's, it's a lot of work, plus keep up with the schools and everything else. So that, you know, you have that money to do that and I'm hoping that that's, and I told them, I told a lot of teachers that I know, go to the school committee and publicly ask for that. If you feel you need it that much, go see them. They're the ones who can spend that money, not us. It's the school committee that can take whatever monies they have and adjust it whatever way they can, no different than we on the city side can do, move our money around on the city side. So I just want to make sure the public knows and the school teachers that they need to go and speak to the school committee, not us. I talked to Don Lamath and a couple of things. He says, I never heard of that, I never heard of, you know, I'm not making this stuff up, but I'm just willing, I'm hoping, and I made this, tonight's meeting, a public televised meeting because I want the public and I'm hoping a lot of teachers and I'd see it and understand that our hands are tied, they have their budget and you spend it away. We don't micromanage your budget, but when these people come and say, no, you got to give us the money, it's you. So.
You're the chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't like.
You got caught, you got.
I'm supposed to request a talk. I apologize for that. But thanks, Jim. You're on the back of the list. Okay, we're going to go with Consul McAuliffe now.
That was the longest few moments of my life. Thank you, Mr. President. All right, I just have a few points that I'd like to make and a couple of questions if I'm still allowed. So first, I want to ask the superintendent, how many communities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts are just at net school spending?
That's a good question. How many would you say, John? Maybe 20.
Out of 351?
Correct.
Or so? Yeah. That's a point that I think is important because every other one of these districts also received emergency funding and also has that emergency funding to address longstanding needs. I'm on the record here of saying the mayor's budget is an excellent budget as far as I'm concerned, addressing longstanding needs with police and fire. But I do want to go back on the record as a supporter, unfortunately, we can't add it back in of the 1.25 because we have to have a serious conversation about, I understand, you guys do have a lot of money. I think you recognize that compared to years past.
Correct.
But what is a lot of money, is a lot of money now for a school system and not just Chicabe, this is Commonwealth-wide, that has been dramatically underfunded for decades. We're dealing with the outcomes of a COVID-19 pandemic with social and emotional issues that not only exist now, but existed far before the pandemic and have gotten worse. We're dealing with years of neglect, not through anyone's fault in this chamber or in your chamber, but because of a funding formula on the state level that has disproportionately affected communities like Chicabe. And so you're going to spend that money that you got in Esser to try to address some of these longstanding issues and address the issues that arose from the pandemic. My concern is where do we go after that? Because these issues are not going to go away. Yes, we want to make progress, but this is, I take a look at your burn rate, you've got about 28 million left and to come, and you're going to burn through that because the needs of the students of Chicabe far outpace what your budget is and what the emergency funds available are. And so it's important for us to have that conversation. I think, yeah, this year going without the 1.25 is not going to make a whole lot of a difference in your budget, but for me, it's always been about a value, a value system that I hold and that I know a lot of other people. It is my personal opinion that the city of Chicabe should be above the minimum amount like the vast majority of cities and towns across the Commonwealth. But I will say, as has been said tonight, the commitment from both the mayor and from our city council president, that if there is a need, we will be there for you. I think that is as good as gold. We will be there for you if that need arises. But I want to encourage and challenge everybody to really think about the longstanding inequities that have occurred in our school system that are not going away and in fact, in many cases, will get worse. You can throw a lot of money at problems, but unless you are really targeted with that funding and unless you have long-term commitments to work towards diminishing these inequities year after year, not just one, two, or three years, we're talking generational changes, then we're not going, we're going to be back here looking at deficits and situations like that. So I want to, I just want to end with that. I think you guys are doing some really excellent work. I want to commend our superintendent who has really just got thrown to the fire here, which is an understatement, but you all are working incredibly hard under what are the most challenging times ever in education and know that while we may have a difference in opinion in terms of this, what amounts to small funding amount in terms of the general school and city budget, we do stand with you and we will continue to be partners.
Okay, so I just want to let everybody know, this is going to be the last time on this issue. We're going to get into the budget after this. I went a little bit more. We're at 6:30, so enjoy, that is your final time.
President, are you still in the finance committee?
No.
Oh, I apologize. We're in the budget hearings.
Right, we're in the budget, but we rolled it over so that we can get some more because it has to do with the budget, with the thing. So I'm going to go through the councils one more time if anybody has a question, then we're going to go right into the, just the budget, the light items of the budget. Consul Koushein.
So without the 1.25, you'll still be at above minimum spending?
Correct, but so I guess the issue is we'll be right at net school spending, but with chargebacks, we could fall below net school spending. So one of the things that was stated earlier, we have $5.8 million coming to add on to the $7 million. That is not an accurate number because that is today and the chargebacks are not going through, so we really don't have $12 million. It actually could be lower than that. So I just want to make sure that is known, that is as of today and chargebacks not fully gone through, so we don't actually have $12 million. But we could, to answer your question in simplified form, we're at net school spending, but with chargebacks at the end of the school year, we could be below net school spending.
So you're anticipating $12 million in chargebacks?
No. What I'm saying to you is the 5.8 that was added on the $7 million we had in prior year money is not an accurate number. That is $5.8 million to be added to the $7 million that we already had. That is as of today, the chargeback's not fully gone through because we're ending the fiscal year, so that money could be less. So it could be less than the $12 million we have in prior year money. And you asked me, will we be below net school spending or be at net school spending for, with this budget without the 1.25? We're currently at net spending without the 1.25, but at the end of next fiscal year, it could be below net school spending depending on the chargebacks.
Right, so if you have any chargebacks, it's going to drop below net school spending?
It could drop, yeah, it could drop below.
Because you need $12.8 million for chargeback coverage.
That's not what I'm saying.
Well, because it's, well, I'm just trying to understand it because if you're going to have enough chargebacks, that makes you fall below net spending, then obviously.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying it could be to that point where it could go below net school spending. You're asking me the question, without the 1.25, we would currently be at net school spending, the city would be for that particular situation. I'm saying if that money goes back and charged back the money the city naturally gives us because of net school spending, it could take us, it could take it below net school spending. We would have whatever is in the coffers, whether it's 7, 8, 9 million dollars, depending what that number actually turns out to be, we have in prior year money, we could still have that prior year money.
Right, so I just want to make sure that with your chargebacks, you'll still be at net school spending because you have enough in that.
But that prior year money has nothing to do with the actual net school spending.
Okay. And then I know we keep talking about the commitment, yeah, you know, there was a commitment. The commitment is that we will never fail the schools. If you need it, we're going to give it to you. So is, don't look at the dollar value in the commitment, look at the commitment on behalf, you've heard it from everybody tonight, you will always be at, at your least, your net school spending, if not more. So, you know, there is no worries about that.
But that net, that prior year money has nothing to do with the actual net school spending.
Okay. And then I know we did, we keep talking about the commitment, yeah, you know there was a commitment. The commitment is that we will never fail the schools. If you need it, we're going to give it to you. So is, don't look at the dollar value in the commitment, look at the commitment on behalf, you heard it from everybody tonight, we're, you will always be at, at your least your net school spending, if not more. So, you know, there is no worries about that. Because I know you mentioned, well, we had money last year and you gave it to us. Well, shame on us, we didn't know you had that money last year. So I still think I would have given you the 1.25 with $5 million in the coffers because that's not a lot. But it was mentioned that city has free cash. The city is required to have free cash. The school department is not. And as far as my understanding is, you're not even allowed to have free cash. So you can't, you know, it's not apples and apples, you're talking apples and oranges. You can't talk about our $10 million because we gave free back to the constituents and the taxpayers. It's, so it's $10 million or Sharon can verify that exact number.
The department's aren't supposed to have any free cash.
Right, so, so we're required to have at least 10 million, otherwise our bond rating goes up and the taxpayers have to pay more for our loans. So there's a reason why we have $10 million in free cash that is required and the state requires us to have a balance of free cash. Does not require you to have free cash, so you can't say because you have it, we get to have it.
But I, I would say to you from that perspective, it's prior year money, you calling it free cash, it was not something we planned to have free cash. It's because of some of the things that transpired and obviously that money will be built up. It wasn't like we were setting money aside and putting it in a brown paper bag to have some extra money. It got built up because of COVID and we built it over a time period. The way you make it sound is we have free cash and we're not spending it, we're spending it, but we have that free cash because we have supplemented with grant money in order to spend things we can within allowable grants. That money is built up and then during COVID, we didn't have to spend as many things on certain things, so that's, that helped us build up some of that money, which we will spend. It's, we have to spend 95% of our budget each and every year, so that money is going to get spent.
Right. My comment was directed toward the council, the school committee person who was referring to your overages, like we have free cash, so you get to have free cash. It wasn't directed toward you, Superintendent, because I know you're not hiding it or anything like that, but it is there. We will survive this year, it sounds like without it. Our taxpayers also deserve a break, but if you need it, you know we're going to give it to you like we did all those other years. It's just this year we found out what you had in the bank and, you know, so it changed our opinions a little bit. And we have to do that because we have to also think of the taxpayers, because more people have no kids in school than do. So we also have to look at, on our side, we have to look at both sides of the, we have to look at your side and our side. We don't just get the luxury of one side.
And I, and I can appreciate that, just for the record, stay for the record though, our budget is always a public document, so that money is transparent and noted, it's been in there and what we have, when it was read into, you know, the public document, we knew how much we had and that's something that's always out there for public consumption, the same way our ESER document is online, had to get approved by the state. All this is all public information, so we're not, we're hiding that, hiding that money and to speak to.
That's why I said shame on us. It was our fault for not paying attention.
You all set? Okay, Counsel Tillotan.
Yeah, I wish we could stay on task. Our task tonight is to review the budget.
Jim, what else, Jim?
We have to give you maintenance of effort. I mean, so, I mean, we could argue back and forth about, you know, this or that, but the bottom line tonight is to vote your budget.
Jim, I got that. I understand that, but I'm, out of fairness, I wanted, they came out to talk and they want to understand.
I just want to make sure everybody else understands the purpose of this meeting.
And that's why I said one more time and then we're gonna, I'm gonna go into just the budget.
Okay.
Okay, there's anyone else? One more time. Counsel Costello, last time.
Thank you. In regards to this meeting that's been extended, the finance subcommittee, all I can say to the public is thank God we had that because there was a lot of information shared and 45 minutes, quite frankly, is not enough time. We need a lot more time to discuss the school department budget. And that's why Counselor Dobass and I requested these meetings. Education Subcommittee, we didn't have time. We're at June 30th. This is it. We are now at the midnight hour, okay? Let's not have this happen again. We need a dialogue in regards to get a full understanding of what the school department budget is and I appreciate Auditor Riley for her information because this was definitely a learning experience, not only for the school department, for the city council and for the public. So I want to thank Counselor and President Laflambeau for making sure this meeting was scheduled for transparency and public information, but next year, let's not have it at June 30th as we're approaching midnight and July 1st, the new budgets have to, new fiscal year begins. And I'm sure President Laflambeau, who has been open, will do that, make sure that next year it will be in a more timely fashion. The consequence of being below net school spending, Superintendent Morton, you've talked about the possibility, is that, could that happen during this school year?
During this school year? No.
Yeah, okay. All right. Okay, so we will be at net school spending because that's what the law requires, is that correct?
Correct. We won't know until the, the chargebacks come off top, correct? Mr. Reckon?
We'll do the end of year report. That'll come out once the books are closed here at City Hall. We'll do a huge spreadsheet on the school side that goes out to DESI where it calculates all our spending numbers to come to a final number.
Well, what I'm going to do as chairperson of the education subcommittee is sometime in September, I'm going to call a meeting of the education subcommittee and people can come, the school department can come, and we can start a dialogue that early in regards to money and expenses. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So if we could, when you do that report, can you send one to the city council too, please?
It goes to the attention of Sharon Riley. She verifies it along with the mayor.
It gets submitted to DESI, but I usually sign off on it and, and the superintendent does once everything is completed, so we can get your copy.
No, no problem, thank you.
Yeah, and just so you know with that, it is all actual numbers on that. So what, what Ms. Riley does for us now and why the superintendent is talking about the city cost is that is a pure estimation. They have some actual numbers along with some estimations they have to make, so they do their best guess on that when it comes to those numbers.
But there's actuals and there's estimates for the next year.
Yes, correct.
And that's the reason I asked, that then the city council could look at that as the actual, of your final report, not guessing of what can and what can't be.
And that'll be for this year's, the previous year's budget we're talking about. So the end of the year report for next year, we'll be dealing with the budget we're trying to vote on tonight, yes.
Anybody on Zoom from the city council?
Mr. President, last time, please.
Yep, yep, go ahead.
Thank you, I'll be really quick. You know, I came into this hearing thinking, you know, that, you know, I was going to come in and fight for this one and a quarter million, but I was under the impression that the universal preschool was, was tied to this one and a quarter million. It doesn't seem to be the case. So I, you know, I have no choice but to support the mayor, you know, I appreciate, I don't regret hosting this meeting because we learned a lot of valuable information and I appreciate your answers, your honest answers. But really, I, I feel like there wasn't, you know, an in-depth answer to what's being cut here. I know you said social services for the kids, but, but what does that mean? You know, if this, if this one and a quarter million means that much to the school department, we really need to know what exactly that one and a quarter, this is a lot of money, 1,250,000, it's a lot of money. We really need to know exactly what's being cut.
So you asked about the preschool, so we will have the preschool, but the expansion stops where we currently are. We had to have a lottery for the preschool and just ordered a field of slots. So our expansion, as we speak, at Belcher and Fairview stops where we currently are. We can't expand to other schools without that extra money because that money was tied in there. We can only use a certain percentage of a grant to do particular things when it comes to preschool. We would like to spread it throughout the district and order, as, as Councilman said earlier, it takes a, it's a burden off of taxpayers when they'll have to pay for preschool or anything from that nature. So that's what it's kind of tied to. We can't expand further than where we are. We had to have a lottery. There's a demand for preschool right now. We have Westover calling us looking for slots and everything else, so there is a very huge demand. And then speaking to social services, we don't have any social workers in our elementary school. We have social workers in our middle school, in our high school, in our alternative school, but we need social workers within our elementary schools when we have 10 elementary schools, including Satella preschool, that kids have come back with more social, emotional, mental health issues. That's where that stops, that buck stops there. So we're trying to be fiscally responsible, not to tie our grant money to employees or to personnel because we know there's a funding cliff coming sooner than later.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. I just, you know, in a, in a hearing like this, you know, you, you need to get right to the point, what's being cut, you know? And, and I, I feel like until, until now, we haven't gotten that, but, so I appreciate your answer there, but, you know, I mean, anything more you can advocate for this money, please do it now, and that's anybody at that table. Thank you.
Counsel. Yep.
So if this, if this preschool program is this important, I just want to understand, why is the progress stalled if you don't get 1.25 million when you have over $12 million sitting in an account? If it's that important, you'll dip into it. I, I don't understand the need for the 1.25.
We don't have actual $12 million. We have $7 million. That's an estimate of what we would have.
$7 million. Let's say $7 million is the figure. If you have $7 million, why don't you dip into it?
We will, we will dip into that money, but go ahead, Mr. Frank.
Yeah, if I can answer that, we have, we, we work on a deficit and we have for years worth preschool. Preschool is not a money-making endeavor. Education is not a money-making endeavor, but for every preschool student we get, we get less than half of the foundation money. So going into this year, we are working on a deficit of $3 million for our preschool, so we have to fund that and come either out of general fund or to go to Mr. Dobass's question in regards to funding. $1.5 million out of ESER is being spent, half of that is being spent within preschool, personnel. So that $3 million that we lose on preschool is just for salaries, has nothing to do with curriculum, that comes out of a different line, has nothing to do with facilities, that comes out with a different line, anything with furniture, that comes out of a different line. I'm talking $3 million in just preschool alone, just for this year that we're, we're under a deficit. $1.5 million out of ESER is helping to offset that cost. We, we surveyed our families going into the fall because when you looked at our preschool program, we were maxed out at capacity at Satella. We were offering, going into this past school year, we were offering half-day for the majority of our classrooms. Our first phase was to go to offer four-year-olds full-day preschool. Understanding we only are getting less than half of foundation money for, for preschool students. We're, like I had said, we're losing money within our preschool program. The offset of ESER funds, that 1.5 allows us to expand, but in 2024, when ESER money is gone, we're done with that. In regards to, if I can comment on your $7 million and, and the use of that funds, when we build a budget and when we start this process way in, you know, in the wintertime when we start building this, the, the budget for this fiscal year, we are projecting out and the vision of Chickaby Public Schools three years down the road, four years down the road, five years down the road. We have to, we have to remember that in 2024, when the funding cliff of ESER falls off, we have to have a plan for the, the expansion of CTE, the further expansion of preschool so that every elementary can have at least one preschool program, class within their building. The, the additions of the pathways for Chickaby High within cosmetology, within criminal justice, within the healthcare program, our EMT partnership and things like that. So that money, that 7 million, we have projected out in spending. We have to also respond to the funding cliff with the 1.5 that we're eating in ESER funds for personnel for this year and then continue to expand that preschool, understanding just this year with the expansion and with Satella and offering four-year-olds full-day slots, we, we operated a $3 million deficit.
So with that $3 million deficit, that still leaves you, even if we just look at 7 million as a number, it still leaves you with money left in that account. And so the beauty of budgets happening yearly is that you can come back next year and say, hey, this is how much we spent and this is what the difference is. And if we're projecting that we're going to need more money for preschool, at that point you can, but this year, that 1.25 million just doesn't make sense to give it to you this year. And that's just where I stand on it because you have a projected 12 point, however much it was, over $12 million that's going to be sitting in an account and the deficit you're describing to me is not $12 million. You're not going to run through all of that money this year and if you find that in the next years you need more money, then you come to us and ask us for that money. But we're not just going to give you money to sit in the account when you're already going to have money sitting in the account. I hope you can understand where we come from because as a council, yes, education is super important to us, but also so is every other taxpayer who has children in schools, who doesn't have children in schools, taxpayers who we can actually take the burden off of. I think that when the mayor brought this budget to us, I, I think that was the intention. The intent was, let's lighten the burden because this year they don't need the money. It wasn't, we're never going to give you an extra $1.25 million. We may give you more if we find the need for it in next years, but this year, at this point, the need for the 1.25, it's just not clear. I don't see it.
Other than being above net school spending?
Other than being above net school spending, I don't see it.
Yep.
Thank you. Counsel Zierowsky, last time.
Yeah. Mr. President, I think the mayor wanted to say a few words, but he was.
I was going to ask him after.
Oh, okay.
He'll be the final.
I'd like to hear what he's got to say before I make some.
You will hear as soon as I'm done with everyone else. We'll get to the mayor.
All right, I'll, I'll say it. The president, when he was talking before, said, you know, we're hearing from the president of the Chickaby Teachers Association, we're hearing from teachers, but you know what? A lot of us get calls from parents also. And I got to say, I even had students ask me, why do we do certain things? It's not only the teachers complaining, parents are complaining because quite frankly, I, I look at the budget and some of the comments that were made, I still say you got to be a financial wizard to even figure it out. Because last night's meeting, there, there are parents up there that talked about the school, schools and everything else that they're going other places because they don't like what's going on in our school district. I happen to think that Chickaby has a great school, how would I say it? System. Thank you. A great school system, but a lot of parents will say, how come, how come we don't have this? How come we don't have that? Especially when Counsel Lopez said, you know, $12 million sitting there, that you got the money, spend it. Use it wisely, which I, no doubt you will, but I don't, at this point, the 1.25, I know it says a committed back to Mayor Kost, but it can't be done every year, but we'll never deny education in the city of Chickaby. I think we have a good, good system, but I think if anything this meeting has done, and I thank the president for calling for this meeting, along with Councilman Dobass and Councilman Costello, that Ms. Costello was right. Next year, maybe we'll have an education subcommittee on your budget earlier, maybe in April or March or something to see what's going on. We just didn't have enough time tonight, but I'm anxious to hear what the mayor has to say about all this also and good luck to you. Thank you.
Okay, is anyone else from the school committee that wants to have a final word?
Can, can I just?
Absolutely.
The 1.25, and I get it, it's above the net school spending. Whether we keep going back and forth, $7 million, $12 million, we understand we have money in prior year money, so we get that. We, we know, we're, we're trying to be fiscally responsible. That money, whether it's $7 or $12 million, obviously for us, the priority is to spend the money that's granted and it's earmarked because we know we have a shelf life on that. We spend 95% of our budget. of our budget. We would be fiscally unresponsible if we spent that money first and not spent our grant money and have to give money back to the state. So that's the reason why that money is built up because of COVID. As to the teachers' concerns, we meet with the union, I meet with the union president since I've been sitting here on a weekly basis. So any type of concerns we can hear, we get complaint calls from that perspective. We understand your perspective from the 1.25. We viewed it differently from being a commitment. We do have money in the coffers, and I'd just like to add to the fact that this is the first year we've had this abundance of grant money because of COVID. We usually don't have that amount of grant money within our coffers that allows us to do some expenditures and be flexible with some things that we have built up, that $7 million or whatever it may turn out to be, after the end of the year report, could be $10 million, could be $9 million. That is the reason. But we will dip into that money because where we cannot spend grant money because there are parameters within those grants. But we are trying to expand. We're trying to build programs. We're trying to make it a quality school and a quality education and try to hear the concerns and provide the supports and services that are needed within our schools.
Thank you. Any other city councilors? All right. May I speak a minute? All in favor? Opposed? I may, Jim? Thank you.
Do we get a vote, Frank?
No, you don't get a vote.
Make sure it's like a moment this time, an actual moment, unless McAuliffe, unless you want to hear it.
I just want to mention what Councilor Costello mentioned about having a meeting ahead of time. I've been in on, a little over 10 years on this, on the board, and this was a unique year because of this 1.2 issue and the COVID money that this come up. We're going to head to the budget now, and it's going to go normal and quick because you guys, you know, go through it. Unfortunately, this is what happened with this 1.2 that there was a lot of questions out there. So we thought we would have it. So with that said, Mayor, would you like to say a few words?
I think maybe not.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. With the budget, just the budget book, any questions on the school's budget?
Councilor McAuliffe, was that a moment small enough for you?
Close enough.
Okay. Anybody else? Because you want to...
Sure. Does anyone else have any other things they want to say?
No, go ahead. Two-minute warning.
I want to thank you, school committee members and Mr. Superintendent for the work that you did on this budget, particularly trying times. And we all know that after a year plus out of the classroom, the challenge, challenge educating kids, just having them in a building together is a challenge in its own right. So I want to thank you for the diligence that you all did on this budget. It's a very good budget. As I mentioned previously, I think it's a fraction of where we need to be. And that's a responsibility of the state going forward, to make sure that they live up to their commitment to our district. And I just want to thank you for the work that you've done and that you continue to do. And if there's no other comments, I'll make a motion to tentatively approve.
Hold on. Let me, I'll ask that question. Okay, hold your question. Anybody on Zoom have a question?
He does this to me every meeting.
Anybody on Zoom have a question on the budget?
Motion to tentatively approve.
Anyone on the board floor? Motion made and second to tentatively approve. All in favor? Oppose? And the motion passes. Thank you, and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go now into the auditor's budget.
Ready?
Yep.
Okay, we'll start with auditing salaries.
Page six.
All of the salaries are contractual. You will notice that it looks like there's some large increases in my administrative employees. That's because this year is the first year that they passed an MOA to allow them to go to 40 hours. We're hoping that will trim back our overtime to some extent, which I have had to come back to you a few times over the last few years because of all the collective bargaining and everything to do all the calculation for retros and new rates and everything. So that would, that covers salaries. Everything else in there is contractual. As far as expenses are concerned, it's level funded. And if we go to the special accounts, the first one, liability insurance, I'm sure you're all familiar, that's where we pay the city's motor vehicle insurance, property insurance, our local official bonds. I kind of gauge it by the market and dealing with our outside broker to see what the costs are going to be for the year, and I try to gauge it as close as I can. This year, in the audit of municipal accounts, which is the second special, I did up it to $75,000, and that is because of all the federal grant money that we got, both the ESER, the ARPA, all the money that we received. The auditing of that is going to be done by our independent auditor, Tom Scanlon, and they charge a daily rate for doing those audits of those additional grants. And I'm assuming they're going to add on quite a few more days to, to cover all that for the city and for the school. Other than that, it's level funded.
Any questions on the school, I mean, I'm sorry, the auditors and retirement service council? Bellacare?
Yeah, thank you. I know that you work with the treasurer's office regarding the unfunded pension fund liability.
OPED.
Could you just shed some light on that? Because I know that with many municipalities, that is an issue. So in terms of projecting where that might be funded properly, do you know how far out we are from that?
Are you talking about post-employment benefits? Or you're talking about our retirement system?
The retirement system.
Okay, our retirement system will be, based on our current actuarial study, we're expected to be fully funded in 2027. I think we're like number 14 in Massachusetts, which is a great place to be, although it hasn't been a great year. We ended up reducing our assumption from 8% down to seven and a quarter because of how investments have, if you follow the stock market, it hasn't been a pretty picture. But we're still in a great place. So we do an actuarial study every two years. So our next one, we don't have one this year, we'll have one next year. And at that time, what they'll do, they, they pull in everything and, you know, how long is Sharon Riley going to live? And how long are we going to have to, you know, pay for her, things like that. And they provide a couple of different funding schedules to us. We average the cost of, do we want to push it out farther and not put a burden on the city? Do we try to be fiduciary responsible and fund it quicker? And then you have to weigh the risk of the market. And we've been lucky. We've been, we've been smart, but we've been, we've been lucky up until the current economy has been tough. So fingers crossed that we're still going to be fully funded as of 2027. But every two years, it's kind of reevaluated, George.
Right. No, no, thank you. No, I think that's really important. And thank you for your work. And maybe next year, hopefully, hopefully things are going to turn around a little bit more. But okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Motion to tentatively approve.
Councilor Costello?
Just got a quick question. On the audit of municipal accounts?
Yes.
It went from 60 over the years to 75,000.
Yes, that's what I mentioned about...
Tom Scanlon?
Right. He's our outside auditor. He'll be doing the auditing of CARES Act, ARPA, all the new grants for city and school. And they handle the federal grants on a, on a per diem rate. And I guessed, maybe $10,000. And it is a guess. Whatever is unexpended gets closed back to the general fund, but it's hard to know, depending on their findings, how many days they might spend because we haven't had it before. It's the first time it's come up.
Oh, that's, that's good. Well, let us know how it goes.
Yeah. And whatever's unexpended gets closed back. So it's, it's, it's hard to know exactly how many days they're going to spend on it at this point. He, I called him though, and I asked him what he was thinking. He said, why don't you give your, put a $10,000 in there for a cushion, and hopefully we won't need it all.
Okay, thank you.
Keep my fingers crossed.
Anyone else for the auditors? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve.
Motion to tentatively approve.
Motion made and second to tentatively approve. All in favor? Oppose? The motion passes. Thank you. We'll now move on to the city councils, page one. As you know, the city council is pretty much level funded, other than the longevity and the little pay raises that they received. Other than that, it's pretty level funded.
Yeah.
Any questions? I'll take a motion.
Motion to...
Motion made and second to tentatively approve. All in favor? Oppose? The motion passes.
Frank, did we approve retirement's budget?
Oh, you did both. I did.
Well, we talked about both, but I don't think you voted on retirement. That's why I was asking.
I'm sorry. Let's go back to the retirement budget.
I just wanted to make sure it's on the record.
Okay, so we did the auditors. As it was mentioned, the auditor gave an update also on the retirement services. I'll take a motion to approve the retirement services budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Budget reconsideration. Is the clerk coming?
Now we're moving to recon?
We have to wait for the clerk. Oh, he's in the, I think he's in the hallway. No?
Barb, you want these?
Okay. Unfortunately, we do have to wait for the clerk. So we'll take a five-minute break.
We'll take a five-minute break.